That's all right. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Whitfield.
Present.
Present. Counselor Gomez. Absent. Counselor Ryan. Oh, no.
Previous counsel.
Yeah, that's my fault. Sorry, that's the wrong counsel. I apologize. Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present. Counselor Curran.
Present.
Present. Counselor Ramos.
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present. Counselor Williams. Counselor Williams.
Present.
Present. Counselor Letterman.
I think it may be Counselor Allen.
I said Counselor Williams. Counselor Allen.
President.
Present. Counselor Edwards.
Yes, present.
Counselor Brown. Absent. Counselor Hurst.
Absent. Can you please call Counselor Gomez again, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gomez. Counselor Gomez.
Okay.
Mr. President, I do believe I wasn't recognized.
I'm sorry. And Counselor Davila.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can we please rise for a moment of silence? Can we please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going to try and get through everything this evening. I know we're on a pretty tight schedule, but hopefully things will go according to plan before we get into the budget and allow Mayor Sarno to say a few words. Madam Clerk, if we could just call item number one, and we'll vote on item number one, and then we'll move forward to item number two, which is the budget in the general fund. Can you please call the first item on that?
Mr. President, if she can call me as president.
Yes. Can you please acknowledge Counselor Gomez?
Counselor Gomez.
Present, thank you.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez.
The first item on the agenda is FY21 Budget Order, FY19 Free Cash to FY21 Estimated Revenue.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
TJ Plant, I'll speak on CAFO. This is the first order to make for the revenue that's available for incorporation for FY21. It's just a technical vote before we get into the general fund conversation.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on this order?
On approving the order, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown. Absent. Counselor Hurst.
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on suspending?
Counselor Davila, I'm sorry. And Counselor Davila.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on suspending Rule 19?
On the suspension of Rule 19, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown. Absent. Counselor Hurst.
Yes. The order is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is FY21 Budget General Fund.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Mr. President, yes, thank you very much. Mayor Dominic Sarno to the councilors, thank you for your diligence. Thank you.
Can you speak louder, please? Can everyone else use their mics as well?
I wish that we were together in council chambers, but unfortunately with this pandemic, we have to do this over Zoom. Surreal and extraordinary times, but I'm proud to say we want to thank TJ Plant, our CFO, and Lindsay Hackett, Deputy CFO, and Tim Brown, our Budget Director, that we've been able to put a budget together, unlike some other cities and towns across the Commonwealth, that has no layoffs whatsoever, service cuts, there's no service cuts whatsoever. This is the sixth year in a row that we're balancing this budget without using any reserves. We keep a strong bond rating, which is extremely important for not only the residents, the business community. And as we continue to move forward, again, I'm going to try to be efficient, effective, strategic, and compassionate in the way that we govern. So, the budget's about $728 million, almost $729 million, nearly three quarters of a billion dollars. We did our estimates very, very conservative. TJ can go into that, knowing that we're going to take a hit pertaining to state and federal funds, though we will go after every dime of reimbursement. When you look at the budget, about $478 million, and nearly half a billion dollars is on the school side. About a quarter of a billion dollars is on the city side. And when you break it all down, it's a very austere budget, because really, not discretionary, you take all that out, we really go down 0.7%, $1.2 million with the budget. So, we're trying to make sure we're able to plan, not knowing where this pandemic is going to go, and the potential economic downturn that's going to occur and see what the rebound is. So, you look at contributions to our pension, our health insurance, which is non-discretionary, and again, we're actually down 0.7% of the budget. Now, what the budget buys, and we've all seen it too here, we've been able to keep the popular, Department of Public Works, Chris Segnoli, on our sidewalk crew, which has been very, very effective. We've been able to keep on the wear and tear of getting vehicles on the leasing. Now, even though there is no market, no market whatsoever in recycling, it is still the right thing to do for the environment, for the people of the city of Springfield. We have to supplement our recycling fund for $800,000, but it is the right thing to do. And hopefully, that market will pick up as we continue to go great, which is extremely important. Also, just a couple other highlights that we have. With the facilities management, Pat Sullivan, his team, done a tremendous job. We're bringing some stuff in-house, and saves about $180,000, and it has been so important with the cleaning, especially with the COVID-19 coronavirus. We've also moved now to the new state-of-the-art East Forest Park Library Building, which has been fantastic. And we continue with the maintenance there. The capital asset construction, Pete Garvey and crew have done a tremendous job. I personally thank Treasury Deb Goldberg, and Jackie McCarthy, and Matt Donovan, the rest of the crew. The Mass School Building Authority, they've done fantastic. It was well over $600 million of new schools and rehab schools being built. And as you know, DeBarry Homer was voted on just last week, and Breitlin Lincoln's coming along very, very well. And then there's numerous schools that were doing rehab projects. And as I promised, with the great history with the MCBI building, with many thousands of people helped out, but now it's a derelict building. I am going to get that demolished and down for the neighborhood of that area, all the great families that are up there. So, that moves forward on being able to leverage money with the NSBA. Parks and Recreation, Pat Sullivan does a great job. The terrorist program continues to move forward. Splash pads open today. We're unable to do because of the COVID-19 regulations. We have pools or Camp Star, Camp Angelina. We're continuing with our new parks. The crew's out there maintaining the old Angie Forian Park in the south on Emerson Drive. My old stomping grounds, Murphone Park, Court Square, Stern Square, Tension Plaza is now being redone. It's going to be a great connection to downtown and our world famous Dr. Seuss Museum, besides our other parks. TJO, and I know animals and pets are nearing near to each and every one of you, that maintains full operations, essential operations, and we're also serving, helping out Chico B and Polio. Code enforcement is fully staffed, inspectional positions. And this, again, is to help ensure healthy neighborhoods and safe buildings throughout the city. The Health Department, Helen Cawthorne, her has done a great job, and again, she's been my point person on the COVID-19 coronavirus. That is fully funded. And we've also added to the nursing aspects and the gambling outreach coordinator, our homeless and cold weather task force. And with your help, I created the Office of Racial Equity, and I'm hoping to get that funded tonight for two reasons. One, the street workers program, and again, expansion of training. Helen Schapp, the Commissioner, Clapham, pertaining to cultural sensitivity, mental health, not only dealing with our community, but within the department, and then the street workers, which would be a different type of program to be out and about in the streets. Before, the few situations or something goes on, this is to knock down this constant gang and gun violence that's occurring. And for the record, a number of those individuals, we've arrested a number of times, but the courts are letting them out. But I really want to get the root causes of some of these problems. And that's what we're going to do with the training and the street workers that are moving forward through Helen's shop. Elder Affairs, Helen's here, Sandy Federico, you know, we've done a great job keeping our seniors active, being out there with them, though we can't see each other personally, but we continue the delivery service on the meals. 5,000 masks went out last week to our seniors. The new vehicle, the new buses is in, and we can't wait to use that once we defeat this COVID-19 and once we get to Phase Four, to reopen our senior centers there. Veteran Services under Tom Belton is fully funded, and we've been able with the additions there, the proper case management continues. The libraries, and we're very, very lucky for a city our size, I'd say northeast quarter, they have all the branch libraries that we have. They stay open, and they're fully funded. Right now, we're doing curbside service, and then we've also been able to continue with the Davis Foundation, the award-winning REIT Success by Fourth Grade. And very good compliments coming back, the REIT the Right Now Adult Literacy Program, we continue out of Pine Point, and they had a good number of people that were taking advantage of that. On the fiscal responsibility, I believe this is the 12th year in a row that we've been independently awarded for excellence in financial budget. I know it doesn't sound sexy, but it's important. The backroom offices for all the projects, that sexy projects that we do. We continue to contribute to our pension liability. It's a 9% increase this year. That's 43, 47.3%. We're honoring all our obligations when it comes to our contractual agreements. And we continue with the REO, which also counselors serve on that. Two project managers are there to continue to ensure diversity, hiring practice, construction projects, and also to ensure federal and state regulations, the state rules are being met. On public safety, this discussed a few weeks ago, the body worn cameras continue to be rolled out. I give Commissioner Clapham a lot of credit on that, and that's, that's good all around for transparency and accountability for our community and for our police department. So, that's $620,000 that has gone there. We're also funding to try to get ahead of and stay on top of attrition with the police department. A number of retirements are coming across, some are surprise retirements. We have an academy of 40, beginning TJ in October, November, October 20th on that. Commissioner Clapham, we've been very good about preserving and protecting our workforce during this COVID-19 and strategically moving the police officers and the command staff, the Chief Daniels here, to five different areas and going back to one cruiser vehicles, which led to a tremendous amount of wear and tear. They run 24/7. So, 19 police vehicles are being pursued for the aging fleet that we have. We continue on the non-aggression type activities. It's had to be used, 125,000 on the tasers that has to be used. And then a big thing with the firearm instructions and being able to have the range, which also can factor in for other police departments around Western Mass. We're desperately needing that. We can utilize that for them for cost to do that. On fire, Commissioner Calley's done a great job. We're running two academies, many academies with the state and the orchard. August, October, again, we're trying to stay ahead of or stay close to attrition on that. We've also, important to our firefighters, increased the equipment gear, turnout gear, and safety for our first responders. New apparatus that we began to fund FY20, we've fully funded this budget. And then again, for firefighters, 75,000 to replace the SCBA air bottles while fighting fires. It's allowing for more capacity and aligns with the NFPA standards. We continue the O2X program for promoting physical and mental health. Those are just some of the, I know you're under a tight timeline, some of the things that we're proactively doing. And again, I appreciate the council doing your due diligence. Balanced budget, sixth year in a row, no reserves have been used. We've been able to keep a healthy reserve. We keep a strong bond rating, we're able to move strategically on projects that need to be done. And we're also preparing ourselves, and I'm going to rock, knock on wood, for the financial downturn that we're facing now, potentially could occur as we get out of this COVID-19 coronavirus. So, with that, it's about three quarters of a billion dollar budget. And again, 250 of that is on the city side, about 478 is on the school side. And when you take it all in turn with non-discretionary funds, we actually went down 1.2 million, 0.7% decrease in the budget. With that, I'll stop, because I know you're going to have some questions and comments. Cabinet heads and department heads are here via Zoom, and obviously TJ and the financial team are here. I thank you for your due diligence. I thank you for calling the meeting, as we continue to move the city's script through. Thank you, Mr. President.
Judge, unmute yourself.
You're on mute.
I apologize. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind councilors that we, we only have 40 minutes until our hearing's meeting. And so, at 6:30, we will, I will ask for a motion to continue this meeting, and we will, if we're not done, and we will reconvene tomorrow at the same time at 5:30. So, at this point in time, I will open it up to discussion, amendments, or questions. Counselor Davila, I see your hand raised in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your presentation. Mr. Mayor, my compliments for putting together a budget that keeps core services and other layouts, the companies here. Mr. President, it is probably acknowledged that the states and cities will be facing, as I just stated, significant reduction in revenues. Here in Springfield, we have hefty expense program of about $192,000 in the OTB fee for the recycled program, which the mayor alluded to, among many other expenses. It is a $728 million budget. We have had approximately four murders in the last two weeks, and we're scaled to the middle of a pandemic that has, as of today, infected 2,600 people, residents, residents, and caused about 115 deaths in the city of Springfield. This is why, as much as it pains me to, Mr. President, I question the need for a lease of a shooting range for the police department for a cost of $800,000 a year for 20 years. I'm very concerned, because that's $60 million in 20 years, in a 20-year period. I do believe, Mr. President, this money could be used among many others for, to help the 301 call center with outreach efforts to the residents, or to create a gun buyback program to get guns over streets. So, this is why, Mr. President, I, it is my, I feel that it's my duty to make a motion to cut $800,000 from the Facilities Department on the OTPS for the lease of a shooting range from Smith and Wesson.
So, there's a motion made by Counselor Davila. Before we get to that motion, Madam Clerk, can you please acknowledge Counselor Brown, if he is indeed on the phone? I know we let two additional people into the meeting. Can you see if Counselor Brown is, is indeed present?
Counselor Brown. Counselor Brown.
Okay, so maybe, I'm sorry, he's being admitted now. So, we'll, we'll come back to him. There's a motion on the floor made by Counselor Davila. Is there second to that motion, seconded by Counselor Gomez? Is there any discussion on the motion to cut $800,000 from the facilities budget? Counselor Allen. Counselor Allen, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also had some concern about this $800,000 expense. So, I would like to call up Commissioner Clapham to speak to it a little bit. But I did an analysis with CAFO TJ Plant today and talked to a couple other councilors about it, about our options. And, well, nobody wants to spend $800,000 on this. I, I came up with four options, one of which is to stay at Pearl Street, one of which was to go to a gun club, like the Springfield Gun Club in Munson. I priced that out. One of, one of which is to build our own, and one of which was to go with this proposal. Frankly, I, you know, I'll just briefly say that the Pearl Street option is, presents health and licensing issues. So, it just doesn't seem at all smart to stay there. The Munson Gun Club option will be between memberships and training and overtime and travel, et cetera. It, it came out to 280 to 300,000. Every individual membership is 200 bucks. And then, training and four, four hours of overtime to travel, minimum four hours is the, is in the contract. So, that came out around 280 to 300. Admittedly, somewhat rough numbers, but not that rough. They, they were, I got, you know, some, some info from TJ. So, that was around 300. Building our own, and also, you can't use it year-round. I, I got an aerial view. I got on their website, got an aerial view of it, and it's all outside. So, practically speaking, at least that gun club would present issues, you know, a few months of the year when we're in the wintertime. Building and, building our own sounds great, but you get into the capital plan, and, you know, bonding, our bonding, our two major priorities right now are the two new schools, which are 100 million each, 200 million, a little, a little bit more with the park on, on Overhem Avenue. That's, I think, all of our priorities to get those built. So, talking to TJ, he can speak to it better than I can, but that kind of threw me off of that one, because there's probably a three-year runway to get to that point, even if we chose it. So, I came back to the rental. It's higher than I would ever want, but there are some other benefits from it. Those being, it's another training facility in an era where we're trying to do more training. And a lot of what we've talked about, from the press release last week from the mayor, and from the requests from my colleagues, Hurst, Williams, and Whitfield, a lot of that was about training. Also, there's an intention to move the IIU there, which would be a good spot, independent of Pearl Street. So, there's some other intangibles that go along there. Not to, not, not to mention that, you know, probably, you know, I'd like to hear from Commissioner Clapham, if that's all right, Mr. President, and what she thinks about that. But that was my, my analysis of four options. And I think, even though this is more expensive than I'd like it to be, it still seemed to be the best option of the four.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Madam Clerk, can you please acknowledge Counselor Brown, who is, has now joined us?
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Counselor Brown, did you also have your hand raised, or did you, were you just waiting?
Yes, I, yes, I did. I wanted to be acknowledged, and I want to apologize to you, Mr. President, and my colleagues. It's been kind of difficult as far as the procedures, as being able for me to get online. It's been, every single, every single meeting, as far as the focus, I haven't been able to get links. I haven't been able to get on. It's been a struggle. I've had Counselor Williams, usually during the session, has to send me the things. It's been very difficult for me to get the information. I've been trying for the last hour to get online.
Counselor Brown, after this meeting, I can send you all the remaining links for all the meetings coming up that I was sent from Focus. I forward that to your email.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Brown, and we're glad you're here. Now, there's a motion on the floor made by Counselor Davila. It's been seconded by Counselor Gomez. Counselor Allen has asked for the Commissioner to speak to the gun range. Once that occurs, we will acknowledge Counselor Whitfield, who has her hand raised in the queue, followed by Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Counselors. Thank you for allowing me to explain this a little bit more. The station at 130 Pearl Street was built in 1968, and the gun range in the basement of that building has been used every year since. And now, with over 480 officers, it's being, it was used twice a year to qualify. The qualifying of shooting at least 50 rounds twice a year is set by Mass Police Training Council, the MPTC, in their curriculum. I agree with it, and I would think we would have to shoot actually more, especially this day and age. Training is so important. God forbid, we, we don't want a mistake with the deadly weapon, the handgun or the rifle. So, and to avoid that, you train as much as you can. Most ranges now are going, as I explained last Tuesday, to the simulations type of training, instead of just shooting at a target, because what happens when you're shooting at a target, it becomes repetitious that you're, you're not excitable, you're not out of breath, you're not nervous, and you're not scared, which is not a replica of a street fight or when firing your weapon out in the street. This range at Smith and Wesson will allow us to move in vehicles, allow us to change lighting conditions, allow us to change weather conditions. The lanes are already set up. They're putting in a new ventilation system, which is what's failing at 130 Pearl Street. The ventilation in that building is horrible, and I think, as I described before, you end up coughing or blowing your nose, and the gray matter from the gunpowder comes out. So, it's very unhealthy. Counselor Allen, we, we did the same as you before making this decision. We thought of building our own. We, we looked at some land out near Grock Mall, and we kind of priced it out, too. And it ends up being a little bit more than a billion dollars per lane. And, and to, to build the safest backdrop is, is very expensive. And, and the roof, the ventilation of walls to keep anything from going out of that building, it's extremely expensive. We looked at outdoor ranges. We're being turned away from ranges like the one in West Springfield, Agewell, and Munson, because we shoot so many rounds. We, we do a lot of shooting when we shoot our. Our academies are large. I talked to the Munson, and after examining that, and everybody having to pay a membership, and knowing that it's outdoors, inclement weather, it would be dangerous to have firearms out there and have a training class in the ice and the freezing rain, or in the snow, so it's better to replicate those conditions inside, under safety conditions. We looked at a number of different ranges, and we were turned away. I asked Chickaby what they do. They just spent over $3 million to fix their downstairs range, and they got three lanes in it. So that's over $3 million for three officers to shoot at a range at one given time. We have over 480 officers being qualified, so pretty unrealistic, and they can't do long guns down there. Chief Jebb has a relationship with Westover, so he's able to go to Westover. West Springfield said they're having a tough time even shooting at their own range outside in West Springfield. They would be interested in coming over here to Springfield to pay us a fee to use the Smith and Wesson facility. It's beautiful, it's all set up, and as you mentioned, it would also house our internal investigations unit, which we were trying to get out from Maple Street. It's been difficult, because there's been more mental health offices going into Maple Street, and parking is difficult, and I don't see it being feasible to have people go there to complain about the police and deal with what's there. If we put them at the Smith and Wesson facility, they'd have their own entrance, they have their own secure parking, and brand-new offices, I think people would feel comfortable going there. There's also a lot of classroom space at the Smith and Wesson facility, so that when you go there, you spend the day there, there's no travel. You can now qualify at this shooting range without having to move halfway through to go to a classroom, where the firearms instructors show you videos. That's part of the certification. Springfield is lucky enough to have some very qualified firearms instructors. This would enable us to not only bring other police departments in, but we could start certifying civilians and have classes to bring in some revenue into this location. It's just such a desperately needed thing right now, and we did look at the other options, and this is the best option for the police departments. I knew right from the get-go, you did not want to invest millions into the basement of 130 Pearl Street, when you know the rest of the structure is not that well up as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Brown, on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the motion, thank you, Mayor Sarno, for presenting the budget. I wish we could have had a conversation, but it didn't happen. On the motion, I wanted to know if TJ has a breakdown of expenses of what the $800,000 would cover exactly?
Right now, the $800,000 is the all-lease cost. I can actually get a breakdown, just on that, but I don't have that. The all-lease cost, including the stuff that's triple that lease that we have, so.
I think I'm looking for the intangibles that Counselor Allen was talking about, besides the internal investigation unit moving over there, and the training room that Commissioner Clapproot just spoke about, what other intangibles in parking, what other intangibles are included in the contract, if you know. Or are those the only ones?
Classroom space, training, training status.
You can get three ranges really, and one, you have the lane range, and then you get two scenario-based range and a long-gun range. There's actually three ranges in that.
Yeah, plenty of parts.
Secure part.
Secure part, your report.
Okay, thank you. If we could get a breakdown, TJ, that'd be great.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Walsh, on the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Commissioner Clapproot. This sounds like this is a consensus, this is, it's time for this idea. I'm actually familiar with the gun range, because when I was taking classes for the Citizen Police Academy, we all got a tour of the gun range. So I know it's, and I just remember thinking what a dark place it was, so I'm supporting this, but I'm concerned about taking $800,000 from facilities. What does that do to facilities, and what does that eliminate?
It's added to the budget. So we added $800,000 for the lease of the facilities budget, that we treat most leases of the city, so the $800,000, unless it's being taken from somewhere else within OTPS, it's $800,000 of new money.
Okay, so it doesn't jeopardize anything that personnel or programs?
To the vest, we've got a 12-year contract. Yeah.
So there's a motion. Did that answer your question, Counselor Walsh?
Yes, that's what I was worried about. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to cut the facilities budget by $800,000 for fiscal year 2021. It's been seconded by Counselor Gomez. Counselor Brown on the motion, followed by Counselor Ramos.
I would just want, I want to commend Commissioner Clapproot and the work that you've done, that you do. One thing I want people to really realize, as far as my colleagues go, is that when it comes to the facilities of our police station, it's piss poor. I give it F-, we're back in a cave age. We haven't changed anything for like 50, 60 years. So I would just want people to understand, as far as the new type of issues that come along, we're far behind as far as the money that we need to put in to improve our police station. We need way more than this. I can tell you that. We need a new police station. We need, it's not enough. So I just would just stress to my colleagues, I do understand that even on a state issue, there's been trying to stress the fact, well, we need a new police station. I mean, it's ancient, I mean, we're running our police force out of a cave. So I just would say, anything we can give our police station, we need to give it to them, and we need to even get more. We're not even at the level we need to be at. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. I believe we had Counselor Ramos in the queue, followed by Counselor Gomez.
President, thank you. Mr. President, I support the motion made by Counselor Davila to cut the $800,000 from the budget. This is not a time for us to be having this conversation. I don't know how or when this was put into the budget, why this was put into the budget. It should have been presented to the council as a financial order on its own, and it should be presented to the council as a financial order, separate financial order on its own. I encourage them to bring this back to a regular meeting, so that we can fully discuss this issue, have subcommittee meetings on it, do a little bit more research, and consider other options. We should not be discussing this as part of the budget. This should be taken out of the budget, so that we can discuss it as its own separate item. When you consider, Mr. President, the current climate that we're in, and you consider all of the national cases that have led to all the protests, the amount of people who have been victims of police shootings, who, why, why are we discussing a gun range now? I mean, who came up with this idea to say this is the time for us to talk about teaching our officers how to shoot? I mean, if we're going to invest into training, there are several other trainings that I think would be more priority than this. And considering the fact that we're going to, that we keep hearing that we're going to go into a recession, and now we're talking about spending this kind of money, it just, the timing is not right. The timing just doesn't feel right. I think it's inappropriate to be discussing this at this time, and it should be brought back as its own separate item, as its own financial order, so that we can discuss it fully, and have meetings, and do some more research. Look, we need a new police station, period, and we should be knocking at the doors of every legislator, state legislator and federal legislator that represents the city of Springfield, and asking them for help and assistance, and helping us find the funds to build our own, our own, a new police station. You know, this is just a Band-Aid, and it's a waste of money, in my opinion. So, again, if you, if we want to continue this conversation, it's not, this is not the time, not during the budget. We can discuss this as its own separate order.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Brown, on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, the administration, for making sure that the presentation was well-thought-out and put together. You know, you guys always do a good job with making sure that we're not losing people, you know, and not laying folks off, and I think that's the most keen and important piece to this budget, on a consistency, that, you know, we keep people working regardless of if it was a tornado to a pandemic. So my hat's off to you, Mr. Mayor, to be honest. I have to give credit where it's due. But when it comes to, and it came from you, Mr. Mayor, you said that this is an investment. And many times in my five years here on the city council, I have tried to, you know, focus on different things, on, you know, where investment should be, and this climate that is going on now, is it new? This is something that has been consistent for quite a while, you know, on the injustices and things that were created. Obviously, you know, our police department, when done so, does an incredible and phenomenal job protecting the city of Springfield. I'm going to be honest, just listening to Commissioner Clapproot, you know, it does seem, and it does, like, the visual, obviously, I don't have it in front of us, but the things that you are elaborating on are awesome. They sound very great, but we have to start investing in our communities, and, you know, respectfully, a quarter million dollars, I don't think is enough. I think that it's time for us to really look into, you know, things, and I know we've been working hard on, but I have to, you know, shout it out and give it, give us some amplification when it comes to Harina, why we have to wait so long. And then when we look at the four different options that Counselor Allen had put forth, and, you know, when you do the numbers at its highest point, if we were to rent out, it comes out to about $6 to $9 million, so essentially, down the line, $16 million, and you take that off, you know, we have a good couple million dollars over 20 years that we can do something with, or like how my other colleagues have stated, that it's always been in the wind, let it be in the state delegation, or in the state house, or here, that we do need, we do need a new police station. Rather, when we look at the police station, and we look at the environmental challenges that it has, and we look at folk, places like Harina School, and also the courthouse, all of those structures look very, very similar. Maybe they were all built at the same time. I wasn't around for that, but, you know, that's just, that's just an idea that I have, that I think now, if we're going to invest in something, and if we can at least, you know, look forward to, you know, increasing some kind of mechanism or some kind of work, because it just seems that this year, because of the pandemic, from facilities or from parks, I guess, we eliminated $800,000 from kids that don't have, that were looking forward to working, but under the pandemic, we had made other adjustments, that it just seems that the $800,000, you know, is just equivalent to the fact that we're taking jobs away from kids, and we're putting it into a facility to make sure that police officers can qualify. And honestly, training is a must, the training is a plus, but I agree with Counselor Ramos on the, rather, on that this should be an item that we have seen through a different approach, a different order. I think it puts us in a very, very slippery slope moving forward. I think that we could have, when it comes to investments and things of that nature that's on our capital plan, that a gun range is something that we can look at down the future, down the line, and I think that, you know, we can do a good job with trying to figure out what is the best, and ultimately, what is going to be the best resource for the police, and also for the residents of Springfield. So with that, I am going to support, obviously, I seconded it, but I am going to support this cut, hoping, hopefully, that the administration finds a place specifically that we can be very, very, we can do something really good with this money, and we can do something that's positive, that it invests not only into the police department, but outside of that, into our community.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Brown.
After, thank you, Mr. President. After listening to my colleagues, I do agree with Counselor Brown that the facilities are old, and we need to be looking at improving our facilities. With that, I'm uncomfortable with allotting $800,000 a year for 20 years. I mean, there was no negotiation of the timeframe that we would pay it, so to me, it feels like we're not going to build a new facility, or look to build a new police facility for 20 years, because we're under this contract, and if we do look to build a new police facility, we should definitely include a new gun range or gun range facility, and even maybe a new internal investigation unit included. So I feel a little bit uncomfortable that we did not have a chance to even talk about this $800,000, to really get into the weeds, to the details of what is in the contract. And so I'm going to have to agree with Counselor Ramos and Counselor Gomez, that it feels uncomfortable, it feels thrown at us, we didn't have a meeting about it, it was like a surprise, and this is the type of communication that we need. These are the type of situations that we're trying to avoid. If we could just have communication with the administration, then maybe this would be passing in the budget right now. However, when we get the information thrown at us, and we have to make a quick decision on it, it feels very uncomfortable for me, so therefore, I'm going to support the cut.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Brown, followed by Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with my colleague, Counselor Whitfield, 100%. This was something that I spoke of last time, as far as the communication process. It's something that we do have to develop. She is 100% correct. It just seems like, you know, we act like a bunch of kids when it comes to certain things. There is no reason why we, they didn't communicate it with us. I agree with her. We have to do better. I believe we will do better. I believe we're doing better. But I also know that when you speak of the community, the police that are going to actually be impacted by this are from the community. I'm a cop kid. We can't sit there and now with the actual height and impact and the scrutiny of the police force, not expect them to be excellent. We have to give them the resources in order to do so. We're not asking for that much. I don't believe so. So when I say "we," I'm a police kid. I understand, I want to serve and protect our community. $800,000, that's nothing. What we need to do is ask for a new police station. We need more, 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 more. And these are individuals who serve and protect us, and to be able to make sure that they execute their job at a high level, and they have the opportunity to have the resources to do so, I believe is important, because these are mom and dads who go home every single day, knowing that they're protecting us, and if I have the opportunity to give them an uptick, I'm going to do so, because I remember how my dad struggled. I remember what he went through. So yes, they should come and speak with us, but we are a poor police station. So for $800,000, that's peanuts. We need to do more. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. I just want to acknowledge that there are seven minutes remaining. My hope is that we can get to this amendment, although that is starting to look a bit far-fetched even now. So Counselor Allen, Counselor Davila, who was saying, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I can't. So Counselor Allen, uh, Counselor Davila, who was saying, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I can't.
Mayor Sarno.
So, so Mayor, if somebody wants to acknowledge you, I know Counselor Allen, um, is up next. If he wants to acknowledge you, then I certainly will allow him, uh, to do so. It sounds like you do have something to say, but I'll defer to Counselor Allen who has his hand up in the queue.
Who is trying to?
The Mayor Sarno, Mayor Sarno. So if you have.
Be happy to have him, uh, speak.
The floor is yours, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor President. Uh, three things here. The new police station, uh, we moved that at a few years ago, fifty million dollars. And we're trying to get that money released. And my administration guaranteed that we're coming up with forty-five million. That does not happen overnight. In the meantime, uh, as, uh, with the mayor, he or she, proposals are made to me as far as what departments need for improvements. This was a proposal that was put to me. We reviewed all the options. And this is the administration that put forward to the council for consideration. Number two, uh, Harina School, my administration has invested millions and millions of dollars. We're finally making some headway with the state because it's a state responsibility. But well over two million dollars have been invested in that. And the last thing I'll say is training. This is a requisite for our officers, our brave and dedicated police officers. But not only for their safety, but for the safety of the community. So the more training we can get, being able to simulate many of these things, the I I U, the classroom instruction, this is not only the protection of our officers so they can go home at night to their families, but this is also to enhance our community also. When some dangerous situations occur. So we thought to be proactive, but this doesn't take away from building a new department. Uh, we're going to put the money in. I need the state to release that fifty million dollars. That's something that was done two years ago. So those are the, the three points there, but investments happen. With our schools, well over six hundred million dollars, well over, God, what do we know? Harina School, it's money we put in there, almost three and a half. Almost three and a half billion dollars my administration has put in. Now finally, we're going Chris Sicknall and we're getting Mass D O T to admit they need to take care of that membrane there. So that has not gone neglected, but I would ask you to, uh, it's your thing, but your, the point is, and I know Counselor Walsh has been down there, they're in a very, uh, difficult situation department there, which could be jeopardized there, uh, being licensed. And my whole thing about protecting not only themselves, but potentially dangerous situation, but also having that full fledged training that our community is protected too. So I would ask you to take a, a hard look at it. Again, the department's proposed to me, Gavin Head's proposed to me, that is, the mayor, he or she, get those proposals, put it in the budget and then put it before the council during the budget process.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Sarno, uh, Counselor Allen, followed by, uh, Counselor Finn.
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Um, uh, two questions. One is TJ, what, when would there be, what would be the prognosis for when a new police station could feasibly go into the capital plan? Or could go into the capital plan, it's probably in there already, but what, when, when could it feasibly be considered from a Steve Capos standpoint?
Uh, three to five years, uh, before we have bonded capacity and then we have to get the state's batch to be released out of the bond bill.
So let's say five years, because things generally take, all right, so five years. And my other, uh, my other question is, what do we do in the interim? I- i- if this money is voted out and, um, for whatever reason, um, what do we do in the interim? Uh, it sounds like the current situation at Pearl Street is not going to get better without some change. And if it's five or seven years out, say it's five years to get the project approved and a couple of years to build it, what do we do in those seven years? Um, thank you.
Is that for TJ, Counselor Allen?
Uh, it, it's, no, that's just a comment.
That was a comment, okay, all right. Counselor Finn, followed by Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to point out that this, uh, proposed facility that's getting a lot of attention here is in my district. It's adjacent to, uh, the site of North Star Paper and Pulp Recycling Center. Uh, this city council approved a special permit for that. I'm sure my colleagues will remember about a year or so ago. And at the time when we were reviewing the special permit, uh, myself and representatives of the East Springfield Neighborhood Council toured that site and specifically this building, the, uh, former shooting range that was owned by Smith and Wesson. And the community and the neighborhood group and the residents of the area expressed a grave interest, uh, to the owners, uh, in seeing that site activated. So I have to say, from a neighborhood and community standpoint, I'm really thrilled to see, uh, this site getting the attention that it should. And I think that it's an appropriate reuse to have it as a training and, uh, shooting facility for the Springfield Police Department. Um, so I want to say that first. And then the second point is just that, um, I, I, I agree more with Counselor Brown on this subject. I, I think, you know, I, I respect the other counselors who've raised objections. And Counselor Ramos, you did a nice job of articulating your position, but I, I take a different view. I, I think that, um, while policing is at the forefront of discussions that we're having across the country, a lot of those discussions circle around additional training. And this is a facility that will deliver exactly that. It will provide us with additional resources for Springfield police officers to have additional training, uh, so that we can continue to, uh, renew and improve the promise to protect and serve the residents of Springfield and our guests. Uh, having this shooting range and having the possibility of moving the internal investigation unit off of Pearl Street, um, would be a tremendous advantage to the Springfield Police Department. And I know in many times, in many cases over the last few years, there's been complaints about the fact that the I I U unit is based right down the hall from the people that they investigate. Well, if we were able to get this facility, um, that would be an additional protection, um, that would be built into the police accountability system. So, uh, for those reasons, I'm supportive of, uh, the, the expenditure and opposed to Counselor Davila's, uh, motion. I, I think it should be, we should be investing in training now and not making cuts that'll, that make it more difficult to do so.
So, um, thank you, Counselor Finn. Uh, I would like, from a continuity standpoint, to get through this amendment. I know it is six thirty, uh, I will give it another fifteen minutes, but I also know that there are other people that are waiting to start the hearings meeting. Uh, we certainly have an obligation to start that, uh, very shortly. So, um, Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Whitfield, uh, and then I think we have Counselor Ramos in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, I, I won't take too long, uh, in terms of what I'm saying, but I am more inclined to, uh, for Whitfield on the issue in regards to the lack of communication between the administration and the city council. It's been a longstanding issue. At this point, it feels like a stalemate. And I just think that due courtesy is needed to have these, these conversations that usually are very insightful. I'm learning more details from the commissioner, for example, um, as well as sharing different perspectives and ideas as Counselor Allen did, to see if there's any way to, uh, kind of curb this, uh, and take a different direction. So that's just the first point. The, the second point is, you know, there's been a lot of talk around defunding the police nationally and all this other stuff. And, you know, I, I have no problem saying on the record that I do not believe that the police force should be defunded. Because emergency in your community, who do you call? Um, and it needs, and, and it's the police, you know? Um, you know, there's certain bad apples. We all know that there's certain times where, um, the, the rep is also deserved, you know? And, but I, I will say this, and it, it speaks to Counselor Ramos's point where as, uh, as an American, as a, as an African American, as a elected official, as whatever you want to call me, I do not feel comfortable at this moment in time, having this be rushed down our throats, um, in hopes of, of passing, uh, an, an eight hundred thousand dollar, um, addition to the budget. And of course, that money crawls into the millions over years. There are more creative avenues that we can take. Um, I think that there, we haven't gotten enough, uh, notice, uh, in regards to what's happening from the state level for a new police department, for example. And I think that the due course and due time i- i- is deserved, um, in exploring those different avenues. Um, this is also, you know, and I, and I'll, and I'll be quite frank, you know, there, there, there was also language that said, you know, well, the shooting start, the looting start. Well, guess what? If there's no shooting taking place from any level, then there's a, there's less problems across the board. And I stand training, but I think training, uh, the de- de- escalation should have the top, uh, budgets kind of, kind of priority out of all of this. Um, and I, and I'll just say again, that I think that it's pretty insensitive to try to put this budget for, to be passed through without, um, subcommittee meetings in the process from the council to, to, to actually discuss this the right way. Um, but it just shows that it's, it's a trend with this administration, and I have no problem saying that. Um, a trend with this administration not to contact the council or not to accept meetings for that matter. And I'm putting my foot down as a counselor for myself and saying, no, I do not agree with this. And I know we'll talk about other points as well, but again, if we're going to put money towards training and, let's put it towards the escalation, let's put it towards racial and cultural sensitivity training. Let's put it towards those things that actually really matter. Because Springfield is my, is minority majority. And if these cops don't know how to deal with that, then nothing of, not a shooting range, I mean, that's probably just, what does that do? But, but, but cause folks to feel even more inflamed about the fact that, um, we're addition of more money to that cause instead of others. So I support the motion, um, to, uh, definitely cut this from the budget. Um, and again, the, if the opportunity presents itself to discuss this further, I'm open.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Williams. Uh, we have Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Ramos. And I do want to acknowledge that City Hall has their hand raised. So if anybody wants to defer, uh, to, uh, someone from City Hall who has something to say, I will certainly leave it up to the counselors. Otherwise, the floor is yours, Counselor Whitfield.
Um, I'll defer if someone there wanted to speak really quick.
Yeah, so this is TJ. So I just wanted to touch base, so for the communication piece, that, uh, it's unfortunate, just kind of, kind of got caught up in the COVID stuff. We were in the middle of negotiating a contract. It's a unique property. It was advertised for thirty days on the central register to let people know what we were looking for. Uh, it is something that we desperately needed. Uh, we didn't have the luxury of time as a way to, uh, get, get the stopgap measure as we look to build a new police facility. Uh, I was part of the conversation. I was, it's a desperate need for the police department. I'd like to work with the council to figure out other ways to get funding for the other trainings, the de-escalation trainings. I could commit to that. Uh, but I think cutting the eight hundred thousand dollars out of it right now is penny wise and pound foolish given the fact that we need to certify our officers two times a year. We need to do academies, churn out academies. Can you not have a place to go? It is unhealthy and unsafe to shoot in Pearl Street. Uh, I will, I will definitely communicate with the council, explain more, call it a subcommittee meetings. But I just ask that this eight hundred thousand stay there until we have that conversation and really go through all the details and have the commissioner report, uh, report out again. Uh, we've done a lot of work behind the scenes. This is one of the unfortunate instances where a unique property does not be city council approval, uh, to get, as, as a way to get approved. Uh, to communications from myself, could have been a better problem. Uh, but we're in difficult times, we're in COVID times, and it's not been an easy thing to communicate on all the stuff that we need to communicate on. We haven't had subcommittee meetings, we haven't had finance committee meetings, we haven't had a chance to talk about this stuff. So.
Thank, thank you TJ, um, and I appreciate you saying what you said. However, we have met every Thursday. We have met every Thursday up until last week. And so if you didn't know this, not last Thursday, but the Thursday before, that you could have, hold on, let me speak, that you could have mentioned it. Or you could have said, let's talk offline about this, because every Thursday, this was never mentioned. And we also have talked offline and set up one-on-one meetings to explain other things. We had a whole budget meeting. This did not come to the forefront. When, when you and, you and I and Lindsay spoke, this was never mentioned. So there were opportunities to discuss this. So I'm not going to, um, bite my tongue or, or act like there wasn't opportunities, because there were. We are very, um, willing to have conversations with you guys anytime, anytime. It doesn't have to be in committee meeting to let me know as the finance chair that this is going to be proposed in the budget, so I can in turn talk to Counselor Hurst about the urgency of having a meeting. Also, I just wanted to address, um, I live in War Two. And I haven't heard any communication about Smith and Wesson being a spot. And I'm not discrediting what Counselor, um, what Counselor Fenton said, but I haven't heard it. No surveys come around to the community. The East Springfield Neighborhood Council is a small population of the total community. And so I think if you were to survey the total community, would they feel that we need to open a shooting range? Or would they feel that we need to teach officers to calm down and not shoot black people? To not target, to follow, uh, black men? My son was just followed three weeks ago by an officer, him and his friend. I didn't bring it to your attention. They, I, my son told his friend to ring the doorbell and have me come outside, and then the conversation calmed down. This is what we do with, hold on, this is what we deal with every day, okay? And I don't think that folks really understand the magnitude of what black people deal with. But I'm going to put it out there. And then we have a fiduciary responsibility to the community to bet funding, whether eight hundred thousand seems like pennies to some, to others, it's a lot. And over time, over twenty years, it's sixteen million dollars. It's sixteen million dollars over twenty years. Now, I'm not saying that we don't need to figure out a way to, yes, fund, um, training for these officers, um, the gun training. I don't think we should enter into a twenty-year contract to do it. And then within three to five years, we may have the ability to build a police, um, a whole new station that includes a shooting range. I don't think that's a wise financial responsibility of the city. Because if you enter into this contract, is there a clause to break the contract? If we are, if we do build a shooting range, is there a clause for that? Or are we going to build this new shooting range and still have to pay eight hundred thousand dollars a year to Smith and Wesson because we entered in a twenty-year contract? Those are the conversations that I would appreciate having with the administration. Just to get clarity, I'm not against outsourcing to Smith and Wesson. I'm not against that. I'm against the way it was brought to us, and we haven't even had a chance to digest it or even talk about it. So I would agree that a financial order is the right way to go. Because we just don't have enough details right now. And I know that the administration does its due diligence. And I know that, Mayor Sarno, you make, um, decisions that will benefit your department overall. It's just not clear to us. And that's where the real problem lies, is not clear to us what's happening.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. So it does not look like we are going to get through this, uh, before being able to have a vote. Uh, it is now six forty-two. Um, I will let Counselor Ramos, uh, and then Counselor Brown have the last word. And then, uh, Counselor Finn and Counselor Letterman, we will pick up, uh, with the two of you, um, beginning tomorrow.
Mr. President, I, I would like to speak tonight, if it's okay. I would like to respond to what Counselor Whitfield just said.
If it's the will of the body to continue until we finish this amendment, I just want folks to understand that we do have a hearings meeting. And, um, there are people that have already signed on and they are waiting. Uh, so I do know that you, that you want to respond, Counselor Finn. Uh, if there are no objections, I'll keep going. Uh, but I just think it's only right that, that, uh, yes, Counselor Letterman.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. President, thank you. Uh, on the point of order, if we do not, uh, vote on the amendment tonight, can the amendment be continued to tomorrow?
That's a great question, Counselor Letterman. Um, I will defer, uh, to the clerk, uh, and if, if not, then we'll continue this conversation.
Yes, the amendment can be continued until tomorrow.
Amendment can be continued until tomorrow. Um, Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Brown. And then if there are no objections, then we'll conclude with you, Counselor Finn, um, and then we'll move to our hearings meeting.
Thank you. My preference, uh, just for the record, would be to at least, uh, conclude with this amendment tonight before, um, before we close the, the meeting. Uh, I'll be very brief. Um, I think that, uh, reiterating what I said earlier, this should be brought as its own, uh, financial order at the next regular meeting of the Springfield City Council. We should be giving. We should be given an opportunity to go through this request thoroughly. Um, and it's a shame that it was included in this budget, uh, this evening. If this amendment does not pass, Mr. President, then I will have no choice but to vote against the budget in its entirety.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, uh, Counselor Brown. Counselor Brown. All right, uh, Counselor Fenton.
You can't hear me?
Uh, I can't, uh, if you could speak into the mic a little bit more, Counselor Brown.
Yes, I'm, uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can, much better.
Okay. Um, first, I would, um, just want to reiterate to my colleagues, and I would just have to ask that, that, Mr. Mayor, is Ahmaud Shari, uh, how, I mean, Officer Daniels, uh, Officer Williams, uh, my father, aren't there, aren't they black officers?
Is that a question for the mayor, Counselor Brown?
Yes, they are.
And don't you think that it is very important when it comes? And there was a young lady who was, uh, appointed as a black officer, uh, decorated in the police field. Isn't it important? Don't you think it's important for them to have the initial training?
You're preaching to the choir here, Counselor Brown.
Because I'm just curious, I'm just, I just want to stress to my colleagues that you're talking to, when you talk about police, please let's just understand that I am a black, a police official's child. I understand his struggle. We lived in the project. He had a struggle even defending people. Please give him and these people the opportunity. We are peasants when it comes to things. You're talking about peanuts. And I came from the projects, seeing what he came through. So there are black officials. It's not a black and white thing. Give them the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Brown. Uh, Counselor Fenton, um, we'll keep going until there isn't an objection. And if there's one objection, then we're going to end this meeting. Uh, so I see there are three other hands raised in the queue. If we can get to those three hands and, and take, take the vote on the amendment, um, then that would be great. If anybody objects, then we're going to go to our hearings meeting. Counselor Fenton.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I think the delay in my response gave me a chance to cool down a little bit here. I, I do want to take exception to what Counselor Whitfield said. Um, I did not imply or state that the East Springfield Neighborhood Council took a vote or deliberated or was representative of 100% of all the people in the city, no less Ward Two, no less East Springfield. But our neighborhood councils work day in and day out to look into these issues. We've got two neighborhood council presidents on this call that are on the city council, many more members who are members of boards of neighborhood councils on the city council and elsewhere. And so I was not saying that that group's determination is the end all be all. I was just expressing that during a walkthrough that we had last year on a related matter, that there were residents of Page Boulevard and the surrounding area that expressed an extreme interest in seeing that site reactivated. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton.
Mr. President, move the question.
So we're going to rectify that for our next regular meeting. Um, because I, I don't think it's appropriate, uh, for anybody that is speaking out of turn until their hand is raised in the queue for them to move the question. To happen at our last regular meeting, I was disappointed then. Um, and I'm disappointed now because there are two people in the queue. So, uh, Counselor, if, if at all possible, um, if we could just wait until Counselor Letterman and Counselor Walsh, whose hands are raised in the queue, I can assure you that I'll be coming to you with an amendment to the rule. Cause there's just something wrong with people at any given time saying, move the questions and, and then us ending the debate. Um, so thank you, Counselor Davila, uh, Counselor Letterman. Um, and then I, Counselor Walsh. Uh, and again, if there's an objection, then we can, we can immediately end this meeting, um, and have a motion to continue and pick up tomorrow. So, uh, that might be more appropriate, Counselor Davila. Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Walsh.
Mr. President, thank you very much. And, and thank you, the administration and my colleagues for sharing their views and positions on this particular line item. I, I want to start by saying I appreciate all of my colleagues for, uh, the points that they've raised. I think they're important points. I, and I think this is a very important debate, uh, for us to be having. You know, relative to this particular line item and the, the proposal to spend $800,000 a year on this particular facility, I, I don't think anybody disagrees, uh, with the fact that we absolutely need to invest in the best, uh, training possible for our police officers in the city of Springfield. We appreciate the work that they do and we want to give them the, the resources, tools and skills to be successful and to partner, uh, with our community for public safety purposes, and we appreciate them. With that said, I think that I also share some of the concern that the first time, uh, we heard about this particular proposal, or, or actually the first time that I've heard about this need, um, was when the budget document came out. I, I sit on the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Whitfield sits on the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Ramos is the, the chair of the Public Safety Committee. And, you know, I'd like to say just for the future that it would be excellent to be able to have those types of conversations, um, so that we might, uh, be able to produce and, and contribute to that conversation. Relative to the, the line item itself, I think what, what we just want to ensure is that while we provide the best training possible to our officers, uh, that we also do so in a fiscally responsible way. And I too am wondering about, uh, the fact that we know where I need of a new police facility. Um, we also know there's conversations around, uh, the need for a new, a possible environmental concerns at the courthouse. I know that some of those conversations are sometimes being joined. And I'm just curious about, you know, the fact that we're entering or proposing to enter into a 20-year contract on this, uh, you know, to Counselor Whitfield's earlier point, you know, how does that impact our, our thoughts on, on the construction of other needed, uh, public safety complexes and, uh, facilities? And so to that point, my question would be to the administration, where are we in the process on this? I mean, I understand there's a proposal on the floor, uh, with Smith and Wesson, but where are we in that process? And, and what does the timeline look like? Let's say if that line item was approved, uh, this evening, uh, what would happen? And alternatively, what would happen if that line item was not approved? Uh, I would yield to, to whoever is best, uh, able to answer that, although I do have another point to make, uh, following that.
Counselor Letterman, on the courthouse, that is a state call, as you know. And we don't know if and when that is ever going to be built. I know as a representative, now City Council Sean Curry has put that tremendously. We like to keep that in the city of Springfield. Two, uh, we advocated a few years ago, was able to get $50 million in a bond. And said, I asked TJ, I said, I need you to be able to back that up with 45 million to build a new state-of-the-art police department. That's not going to happen overnight, especially with this COVID-19 coronavirus. Three, the decrepit situation of that shooting range, again, uh, not only for the training, uh, but for protection of our officers and our community, to build a new standalone shooting range is $20 million. $20 million. And that would not happen overnight either. So you jeopardize, uh, the, uh, licensing of our brave and dedicated police officers of all creed colors and backgrounds. It's an idea opportunity to continue to expand training, not only within the police department, but through Helen Schaff and Health and Human Services, and moving I I U. For if a situation arises that something is not done right by the police department, people feel much more comfortable going there, uh, with the parking, a secured facility, a classroom. So that's where we're at the point in time. But $20 million to build a new facility, want to build a new police department. But I can, I continue to push the state, give us that money. Right now, they're squirreling away their money. And I cannot say that's going to be on the forefront of, uh, building a new police station here in the city of Springfield. In the meantime, as anyone would do, he or she is a mayor, you have your cabinet-headed department, come to you saying, we are in desperate need, desperate need of improvement and a standalone pertaining to, uh, training, the licensing, protect officers and protect our community. And that's what a mayor here, she does. Puts it in the budget proposal. I know you had subcommittee meetings on it, uh, but that's where we'll be at. In the meantime, you're jeopardizing your health and well-being, not only the officers, but potentially, uh, the community too. I know TJ wants to chime in financially. Thank you for the question.
Counselor Letterman.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the question. I would, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, we certainly, nobody on this call wants to, wants to jeopardize the health and safety of our officers, but, but I, I would like TJ to let me know where we are on, in, in terms of this partic, partic, uh, particular, apologize, this particular proposal, uh, where are we on this right now? It's before us for appropriation of $800,000 this year, with an anticipated continuing appropriation. But where are we, uh, in our talks with Smith and Wesson? Have we made any commitments? Uh, you know, what is our responsibility there?
We have a fully executed contract with the, uh, 299, uh, Page LLC has, uh, invested millions of dollars into the building already. We're to the point where the commission is going to start picking out colors, uh, for the interior. So that's how far along we are, uh, based on the desperate need we have.
So you, you have signed and executed a contract. What does the contract entail?
It entails that they do all the buildup so they can do it with the speed in which, uh, the private sector can do. We do not have the luxury when we do public bidding. So they, they're, they're trying out opening up, uh, the first vendors. Uh, that's where they're at with it, with the work. So we know we need to get this done and get it done quickly because, uh, the situation that they're in is not a healthy one for the, for our police officers. So we had a lot of urgency to move quickly. We found a place where they could move quickly. They had the financial resources to move quickly and were able to negotiate a contract. And this does not preclude us from building a new, uh, police station down the road. That is certainly on the capital plan. It's certainly, um, uh, kind of high on the priority list. We just, I don't have $100 million in the bond capacity at this point. But this is a stopgap measure to get us through.
So what, you, you're telling me you signed and executed this contract that they have already done the majority of the work necessary for the use that the, the city wants to lease it for?
Correct.
So you've essentially, are you telling me you've already leased the facility?
I've already signed and executed the contract. We will, once we move in, we will, the official, uh, L S E of, of the building.
So what is our current financial responsibility as a result of that contract?
Our current, as soon as they're done, we gotta, we're gonna stop paying rent to, uh, 299 Page LLC.
And that will be regardless of this vote here this evening?
Will have to.
So normally, when contracts are for extended periods of time or of this nature, and I've only been here three years, so I, you know, you can give me some insight. But normally, we approve, my understanding has been contracts over three years, uh, because of the longstanding commitment of their nature. I don't know if that's by state law or by local ordinance, but can you shine some light as to, uh, when the, when the negotiation of that contract begun and why it hasn't come before the city council in the way that, uh, previous contracts of that nature would have?
A unique property designation does not have to come before the city council.
You said a unique property designation?
Yeah, it does not have to come before the city council. There's a different process we need to abide by in order to, uh, to claim a property within the city, a unique, uh, property. And a firing range is pretty unique. The process is clear.
And what, what, uh, where is that established, the, this, uh, process for the unique property and who defines it?
Uh, state procurement law defines it. Uh, we ran it through Lauren DiO and put it on the state register for 30 days. We advertised to let the world know what we were doing. Uh, so that they had anything that could remotely be considered, uh, similar to the unique property, they could chime in. Uh, so we did, we followed all the rules, uh, that are required by the law.
And when, just TJ, my last question, just when, when did you start that process? The advertising and that sort of thing?
We started the process a year ago, but we settled on 299 Page, uh, probably October, November, and advertised. I want to say we advertised for the month of January, but I'll have to double check.
Okay. So I'm not, you know, I was not aware of that, uh, that, that, that the contract had gone that far. I don't think my colleagues were aware of that, TJ. We've had, uh, three conversations about this, one in a public hearing and two, uh, you know, private conversations where I reached out for additional information. Uh, at no point was that mentioned. And so I do think that that, you know, raises a question as to, uh, the result of the vote here this evening. If we, if the council, it seems many counselors have raised, uh, some valuable concerns regarding this, uh, this particular strategy. Um, you know, I think that the, the question raised, uh, relative to the permanency of it is, is especially valid if, if we had a temporary fix where we could move out of the basement, certainly to preserve health and safety, um, and then be able to down the line, build in a state-of-the-art facility at a future date. Um, nobody doubts that we need to move out of the basement. We can't continue to do that. Uh, but I do think that, you know, now that the question is, if there is a cut on this line item, what, what will occur? If we've already, if the administration has entered into this contract, uh, that, that essentially ties us in making that expenditure. And I would submit that, uh, to my colleagues that we need to understand that.
Counselor, just to let you know, this is Holy Name School. We did that for alternative programs for our school setting, the drug and alcohol, uh, alternative school, uh, that was done. Yeah, but formerly art school, which you all have, uh, championed in how successful that's been. So this is not, been uncommon on a unique property that we didn't save that building. The Holy Name School, again, uh, that is for students that other areas across the Western Mass area won't have anything to do with. The city of Springfield does. So it's not something that is, uh.
I, I hope that you won't misunderstand me, Mr. Mayor. I'm not implying that the administration acted improperly, although I do agree, I wish that we could have been included in the conversation earlier. I'm more so saying, I'm trying to understand as a result of that process being undertaken, uh, what then will, what will occur if the line item is cut? And, and how will we meet the obligations of that contract?
TJ, did you want to answer that, TJ?
Probably get the, probably shoot.
Well, the other, the other alternative would be to cut $800,000 of the supplies and materials, which we have to pass Sullivan's budget, uh, so our tradesmen and others don't have the resources to do their job.
Thank you, uh, TJ. So it looks like we only have two other counselors in the queue, uh, looking to raise their hands before we move to a vote and then get on with our hearings meeting. Uh, Counselor Walsh, I did see your hand up. It is now down. Uh, did you want to say something?
Uh, yeah, uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. I was just saying that I hope that we'll be able to vote on this issue tonight.
Sounds good. I think that is the general consensus from the entire council, uh, it appears. Counselor Allen, I mean, Counselor Allen, followed by Counselor Brown.
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. I object to this, uh, hearing going any farther. And I, uh, I object and I'd like to have the vote tomorrow night.
So Counselor Allen has objected. Uh, with that being said, um, Attorney Davis, let me make sure I'm doing this, uh, procedurally right. Um, earlier I said without objection. Uh, someone has objected. Is that accurate? Um, can I do that as a parliamentarian? Do we need a vote of the council, uh, to stop this meeting at this point in time?
No, uh, we wouldn't need a motion to continue though. So that would require a council vote.
Fair enough. Um, so Counselor Allen, uh, did you want to make a motion to continue? And if that passes, uh, prior to us, uh, taking the amendment, um, or voting on the amendment, then, uh, we will move on.
Uh, sure, uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I make a motion that we continue this meeting till tomorrow night.
So there's a motion to continue this meeting until tomorrow night? Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded by Counselor Whitfield. Madam Clerk, uh, please call the roll on the motion to continue.
On the motion to continue, Counselor Gomez.
No.
No, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
No.
No. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
No.
No. Counselor Walsh?
No.
No. Counselor Williams?
No.
No. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
No.
No. Counselor Hirsch?
No. So we will continue until we take this amendment. Counselor Allen, I'm sorry, I called Counselor Brown. Your hand was raised in the queue, followed by Counselor Ramos.
Yes, I, I want to put on the record that in my area, there was a family member named Tootoo. She was murdered. Okay, there's murders that happened from the Ave Bristol Street, certain areas that it's just senseless stuff. My family members are dying. So when it comes to giving the police the necessary tools in order to protect us, see, you can't go tit for tat. You can't take away things from them and then say that they did something unnecessary. I need them to be trained. I need them to be the best. I need them to be my superhero. So I don't want anything taken away from them. Right now, it's not about the police. It's about us making Springfield the best that we can make it together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. We have Counselor Ramos up next, followed by Counselor Gomez. Counselors, if we could just be as succinct as possible so that we can take a vote on this amendment, as I know there are some other folks that are waiting for our hearings meeting. Counselor Ramos.
President, thank you. I wasn't planning on speaking again, but I take exception to something that was mentioned earlier by TJ. First of all, I do want to say for the record that I support the Springfield Police Department. I support our officers. And as Chairman of Public Safety, it is my goal to make sure that they have the necessary tools and training that they need to be able to keep our community safe. However, as a city councilman, it is also my duty, it is also our duty to make sure financial order, that every dollar that is spent by the city of Springfield, that we take a look at alternatives and that we do our research to make sure that it's not being unnecessarily spent. And we want to make sure that we get the best deal possible, which is why, because we haven't been given that opportunity on this issue, my request is that it be brought back as its own separate issue at a separate meeting so that we can fully discuss it. I take exception to what was mentioned by TJ earlier, that there is somehow the only other option is to cut from facilities in order to pay for the gun range. That's, that's not the way to do business. No, you don't, you don't, that's not, that's not, I take that as, I take exception to that. No, you know, it's a threat. You know, we are looking to cut the gun range. We're not looking to cut supplies or anything else from, from facilities or any other department. And it might not even be to, looking to cut the gun range. We're looking to discuss it at a later time. That's my goal, to discuss it at a later time, not during this budget process. And if, and there are other options. This is not the only options. Use Pago. We just approved $1.7 million in Pago to be transferred to the next year. If it's really that dire of a need, then you have other options.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Whitfield. And then hopefully, we can move to a vote on this side. Counselor Gomez.
Thank you so much. I think that as long as we can, you know, disperse of this, this motion, we can actually move forward and continue doing business. The emotional, the emotional attachments to, you know, why we support, why we don't support, I think necessarily, no disrespect to my colleagues, me being one of the most emotional people when it comes to things of this magnitude. I think this is just clear business when it comes to the numbers. The numbers just don't make sense essentially down the line. And, you know, I really just, like my colleague stated, we can visit this at another time. For us to feel like tomorrow or next month after that, that they have to get qualified, unless there's something dire that, because we just, didn't we just graduate a class already just so recently? So they're qualified, right? So when's the next time of qualification, if I can ask Commissioner Clapper, when do they? Because we qualify them every two years, yes? So I'm just trying to understand, do they qualify at different times? Is it staggered? Is it something that, you know, that can't wait, that we need to push this through today because they made an agreement with somebody that essentially, you know, has some kind of relationship with the administration? But that's not besides the point. We're just trying to figure out exactly. We're dishing out $16 million, and we have a right to ask questions. And we have a right to cut the, cut, cut this budget if we wanted to. And if my colleagues don't agree with it, that's also okay, because then we can vote it down and we can move on and we can keep on working on behalf of the people and being, and having this fiduciary responsibility. So my question is, Commissioner Clapper, right now, can you explain just a little bit on, when it comes to qualifying these officers that need to be qualified twice a year? Is it staggered or is it like every six months? How does that work out, ma'am?
Thank you. It's staggered. You have a class get out at the end of April, and they'll have to qualify again at the beginning of October. And then everybody else who's already currently there, they have to shoot twice a year. So in order to get that done, again, we do the training while they're on duty. So we run it all the time. It's 12 guns a year that we have a class where somebody ends shooting because the classes are about 15 to 20 officers at a time, twice a year shooting. Your ESU, which is your old TRU, the Tactical Response Unit, they qualify once a month with the long weapons, and we have snipers required to qualify every month. So there's qualifications going on all the time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to apologize to my colleague, Counselor Fenton. I was not suggesting that you meant anything, and I was not suggesting that the neighborhood councils don't work hard. I am, I go to the neighborhood councils, and I do know how hard they work, and we are appreciative of the neighborhood councils. So I apologize to you for that. You're welcome. And to Counselor Letterman's point, I thank you for asking the questions that we really need to hear because these conversations have been going on for a while, but it was suggested there was no time to have a conversation with us. And so I'm getting back to my point of communication, transparency, and our fiduciary responsibility. Now, the contract said five-year contract with an extension clause. I could agree with it. If it said 10 years even, I could agree with it. The fact that the contract is a 20-year contract, that totals $16 million over 20 years, I have a reservation with that, and I also know that there's other funding. I don't want threats to Pat Sullivan's budget. Like, that's really irresponsible. If you're not able to cut trees and do clean city tasks and make sure our buildings are safe for the public by cutting Pat Sullivan's budget, if there's ever a need for a transfer out of Pat Sullivan's budget, I will not approve it. And if there's a need for a transfer into Pat Sullivan's budget to get the work done for our constituents and for our residents, I will approve it because these are services that taxpayers are paying. So if you're even going to suggest cutting Pat Sullivan's services and not being able to get the work done for the community that pays taxes to get it done, that's just inappropriate. It's unacceptable. And I know that there's MGM money that you have discretionary spending over for the police department. And there's also Pago, as Counselor Ramos mentioned. And so I think that that threat was just not necessary and that we should work together to figure out how we're going to get this problem solved. Because if there's a contract that has to be paid, and so we need to work together. I am not against any police officers getting the training they need, because, and to Counselor Brown's point, I'm upset to bring in, like, it hurt me to bring in situations of when folks got killed. My godson got killed by interactions with a police officer. Okay, he's dead, 15 years old. My friend that I went to high school with, Ben Schofield, the officer must have had sharpshooting abilities because he was killed by a gunshot to his van. And he was killed immediately. So they had the tools that they need, and they didn't have the tools that they need because it could have been de-escalation. It could, the outcome could have been different if the training that they really needed had have been provided. And so when you mention those comments, they really pull on my heartstrings. I really didn't want to go there because the training is needed for the police department. And this training is also needed for the police department. We just got to figure out a different way to communicate with each other and work better with each other. That's all I want to accomplish with the administration is transparency, communication, and working together for our constituents and doing what's best for our constituents. Right now, I don't think adding this to the budget is the best thing for our constituents.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Allen, you look like you're the last hand in the queue. So if that is the case, then we will move to a vote after you speak, sir.
Okay, thanks, Mr. President. Just trying to summarize what I've heard here. First off, it seems like nobody disputes the need for this facility to be improved, however that happens. Secondly, should we have known this as a council? Yes, should have known this before tonight or before this budget. I agree, I fully agree with that. Do we have, and we need to work on that communication thing. It's, it's, I've been on 11 years, and, you know, we always are trying to improve that. And we've made a lot of improvements. We should have known this. But do we have an acceptable alternative? Nobody has said we have an acceptable alternative in this entire hour and 20 minutes, except the one that's being proposed to us. So I would like to ask, if I could, Mr. President, just if Commissioner Clapper could just speak to what, what she's going to do if, if we don't approve this tonight? Or what, what are the alternatives and what are the risks of what, what she would have to do? Then I'm done.
Okay, and we'll take the vote after the commissioner speaks.
Thank you, Counselor. I have to go back to the drawing board. We have to start splitting people up. The outdoor ranges I've talked to will not take the numbers that I have. So people are going to have to start going in different directions and traveling, I guess. I could send some to West Side, see if Aglon can take some. We still try to use the downstairs range. We do it for a shorter period of time, and then we try to run the fans as the officers stand outside and then get them back down later. It's a, it's a terrible way to operate, especially when you're trying to qualify and you have to be certified. And it's just a bad message for me to bring back to the police department whose morale at this time is about as low as it can go.
So.
Somebody is out of order. I don't know who that was, and I certainly apologize, Commissioner.
You want to be able to have respectful comments here?
Absolutely. I would agree. I would agree. Can you please finish, Commissioner?
Completely out of order.
Absolutely out of order.
Whoa.
And excusable. Commissioner, can you, can you please?
It would be a tough sell to bring back, and it would have been nice to have a nice facility for these officers to train in, a safe facility, and bring in some revenue at the same time. So I guess I just go back and they borrow and steal, and I'll get it done because they have to be qualified. So I'll get it done. It'll be difficult.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Counselor Letterman, I see your hand raised in the queue, Counselor Letterman, before we call the roll.
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on the amendment?
And I just want to say, that was me, but I was not talking to the commissioner, and I apologize for my language. I was actually talking to somebody that came into my house. I'm so sorry. I apologize 100%. My cousin is arguing with her boyfriend, and I'm sorry to bring my family matters onto the Zoom. I know that was inappropriate, but I definitely was not talking to the commissioner. I'm sorry. I didn't even hear what the commissioner was saying.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Do you need any police over there?
No, I don't, but I'm shaken. I'm sorry. I'm very upset right now. I apologize.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll, and then we'll take a motion to continue?
On the amendment for the $800,000, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
No.
No. Counselor Curran?
No.
No. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
No.
No. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
No.
No. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Mr. President, can I ask what?
So a yes vote?
I don't know if it shows Craig, I didn't get you asking. Are you clarifying what we voted?
A yes vote is in favor of the cut of $800,000 from the facilities budget. A no vote is against that cut.
Well, I would just say.
It's either yes or no.
Based on what's going on, I would think everyone would have wanted to cut it. So why would I vote against the money? No? No? Should I vote? No?
No, Counselor?
No. It's not cut the money? No.
Yes, no to not cut the money, yes.
Yeah, no. I'm not sure.
Counselor Hirsch?
Yes. The amendment to cut the $800,000 from the facilities budget is approved. Is there a motion to continue this meeting so that we can get to our hearings meeting?
I make a motion to continue the meeting.
There's a motion made by Counselor Whitfield to continue the meeting, seconded by Counselor Gomez. Madam Clerk, on the motion to continue?
On the motion to continue, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
No.
No. Counselor Curran?
No.
No. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
No.
No. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hirsch?
Yes, the meeting is continued until tomorrow at 5:30. And we will take a four-minute recess and reconvene at 7:25 to begin our hearings meeting.